Good evening. The time is 6:00 PM and the Lebanon City School Board of Education regular meeting for June 16th, 2025 will now come to order. Ms. Irving, roll call, please.
Mr. McCutcheon.
Present.
Mr. Gliotti.
Here.
Mr. Lane.
Here.
Mrs. Dalton.
Here.
Mrs. Cope.
Here.
You can join me, stand up and join me. Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't.
One more name for the pledge.
Yep. You guys can sit and everything. All right. If you can all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to item four, I need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Sound moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Irving?
Mrs. Cope?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Gliotti?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Section five, communications and reports. First off, we have a very special group of people in the room with us tonight, and I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Severs.
Yeah, welcome to the girls' state championship softball team. It's exciting to say that out loud. We began texting and kind of talking amongst the board, and they wanted to make sure that we publicly acknowledged your guys' accomplishment tonight. You know, there are a lot of people that stream this, not really, but, you know, and they'll be able to see this, but also just an acknowledgement of the work that you guys did. And so I want to share on behalf of the administration, myself personally, I've been to a lot of sporting events in the last 15 years as an administrator at a high school, and that states in my final game was possibly one of the most exciting things I've experienced in my life. I took my 13-year-old son, he knew very little about softball. I think he's a fan for life after watching that. And I said this the next day in a social media post on my, you know, personal account and things, I can point to something that 10, 11 girls did that night that made a difference. And huge accomplishment, very exciting, and I was disappointed that I had family commitments the next day because I couldn't drive back. But we watched. I can tell you that Mr. Lane and I were at our own kids' event, and we were paying more attention to the Gamechanger app than we were to the game in front of us.
He was doing Gamechanger.
I was doing my own kids' game on Gamechanger, but we were watching your game on his.
He looked when the other parents were out.
As we screamed and carried on down at the tournament. So we just want to take the time this evening to acknowledge your accomplishment. And any board members want to say anything about this or anything before we ask Mr. Kendall to speak?
Just so impressed with your commitment, what it took. So excited, so proud of you. I know the whole district is. Just wanted to personally say congratulations to you all and coaches as well.
Anything?
I'll chime in as well. I was lucky, we were at the baseball tournament week before, and I'm like, I want to watch the region. I'm like, who can I ask to be a part of their family? And Sophie's, I know Sophie's family from 40 years ago. I'm like, they'll say I'm a family member, so I got to watch that. And as soon as that game was over, Isaac and I started making plans that come up last Saturday. It was, like you said, it was amazing. There were plays that every grade made to get to the finals. Some of you just, the game-saving plays you made were just so fun to watch. So congratulations.
Coach Kendall, would you like to say anything? If so, would you step to the microphone over there so we can hear you, make sure it's on?
Hello, hello.
You won't be able to hear it in here, but ask that guy right there, is it on? There we go, thanks.
Okay, great. No, first of all, I'd like to, you know, thank everyone for the opportunity to come in and have these ladies be recognized in front of the Board of Education and such a great community. I know I can speak on behalf also of the coaching staff of just how proud we are of all your hard work this year, dedication and commitment to, you know, winning a state championship. You've made everyone in this community proud. You have left a lifetime-lasting impression on your high school and this community that will never be forgotten, bringing home the, you know, first state championship in Division One and the first women's sport state championship in the history of Lebanon High School. And, you know, I just, I go back to someone's face that I saw, you know, and I think you all know her, Judy Conrad, who has just poured her heart and soul into all women's sports and in this community for her life. And to see the enjoyment that she has, you know, knowing that there's now a state championship at Lebanon High School was just, it's something special. And I know I thank all you guys for your hard work. You've made a lasting impression on us as coaches as well, and we truly can't thank you enough. I'd also just like to thank the community for all their support. I'd like to personally thank Keith Pantling and our athletic department for everything that they did in making this, you know, dream a reality. I think Sophia Scheidler said it best in one, I saw one of her post-game interviews. She said, "Our coaches worked us extremely hard this week. They prepared us very well, and we went out and performed." And none of that is possible without the support of our athletic department, this community, and the Board of Education. It's really easy, and I've heard, talked to a lot of coaches that don't have the support that we have here at Lebanon, and they get pulled away in a lot of different directions and, you know, they don't have the opportunity to truly sit down and prepare their team for what they're, you know, gonna, you know, go up against when they get to Akron. We were prepared, and we were fortunate to win our last game and bring home that gold trophy. So thank you to everyone for this opportunity, but first and foremost, thank you to the players, so.
Nice. Yeah, and I appreciate your ambassadors for our school. A lot of people don't, their impression of our school is how you guys behave and perform. And you made us all extremely proud. You probably don't even understand what you've accomplished yet, but when you're my age or...
100.
When you're in your early 40s, you'll look back at this and go, man, I mean, what you guys did is just, it's amazing, and I couldn't be prouder. So thank you all for coming tonight.
They did everything the right way.
You got three seniors this year?
Yes, three seniors.
Jane, Kennedy.
Janie, Kennedy, and Ella.
And Ella.
Yeah, and then our student manager, Mac.
Okay.
You dropped her diploma on graduation day. Sorry about that, Ella.
Gosh, you guys will probably be back here next year, won't you?
That's always the goal.
That's the goal.
That is always the goal.
That's the goal. Thank you, ladies.
Would any of you ladies like to say anything? Mic's yours, Ella. I watched your interviews after the game also. You're, man, you're a woman of few words there, you know, like, yeah. So what we would like to do is get a picture with the team, the coaches, and the Board of Education, just kind of a opportunity for us to get a photo out there. If you guys would come up to the front, and then the board will come around the table and stand with you. That would be great.
I'll have to squeeze a little bit.
Sorry, we forgot the flag, Mr. Severs.
I broke the flag. Whoever's flag it was is no longer in good condition because I swum it a little bit. There we go.
Yeah, we'll see you guys Wednesday, right? Wednesday, 3.
They're all going to talk to us.
Are you guys all speaking? Congratulations. Thanks for coming. Have a great night.
But we got a good foundation.
Well, I mean, I have...
Thank you.
Knowledge.
Yeah.
That's good. Build off of...
Yeah. Thank you.
I didn't check the hearing of the public, I don't think anybody's. There's some...
Okay.
I believe so.
We have two people that have signed up to speak this evening. Just want to read this real quick. The Lebanon City School Board of Education encourages and welcomes communication from employees, parents, residents, elected officials, and local business owners in our community. Any individual who wants to address the board during a meeting must sign in prior to the meeting. Individuals may comment on matters of concern, excluding personal items, and are limited to five minutes per person or 30 minutes in total. Speakers will be recognized by the board president and must state his/her their name and address. No participant may speak more than once on the same topic. All statements should be directed to the presiding officer. No person may address or question the board members individually. The presiding officer may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when the statement is too lengthy, personal, directed, or irrelevant. An adjournment of the meeting can be called if there is a lack of orderly conduct. Videotaping and audiotaping of the school board meeting are permitted as long as all parties involved have been informed and that person's operating electronic devices to do so with minimum disruption to those present at the meeting. The board has a right to halt any recording that interrupts or disturbs the meeting. So we do have two people, and first is Ms. Langdon. If you can take the podium and state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Langdon. My address is 1062 Miller Road, Lebanon. I first want to congratulate the students and the coaches from the softball team. Like some of you, we were watching on Gamechanger also, and they did amazing, and we're excited for them. About why I'm actually here, I'm a parent of five children who have attended Lebanon City Schools. My oldest son recently graduated from LHS, and I also have an incoming 11th, 9th, 4th, and 1st grader who all have attended Lebanon since kindergarten, with the younger two actually starting at age 3 in preschool. Nearly 20 years ago, I was assigned to Lebanon High School, working on my master's in education. I knew after spending some time at the high school that Lebanon is where I wanted to raise my children. My husband and I moved here in 2011 and shortly after our oldest son began kindergarten. From Louisa Wright to Bowman to Donovan to Barry, we have loved this district and community. The teachers and staff have been wonderful. Many of those individuals have become acquaintances, some friends outside of school. However, despite those amazing educators, we've come to the difficult decision to leave this district. As many of you know, I coached color guard for three years in Lebanon. To say it was a difficult experience was an understatement. Making a decision to volunteer and then act as a coach with the program was the worst decision of my life. Not only did it take a toll on my physical and mental health, but my children unfortunately became collateral damage and no longer feel that they are safe in this district. From the beginning of my coaching experience, I was faced with trouble and no support. Within a few months, I was faced with parents making up and spreading rumors about me. One of those said that I was inappropriately touching children. Even after she admitted to venting those false allegations to other band parents, she was still permitted to chaperone. When I said I wasn't comfortable with that, I was told to, quote, "pick my battles." I later learned that this parent is good friends with the principal at the high school, the same principal who was assigned to mediate the situation. Little did I know that was only the beginning of, many of you are aware, I had a dispute regarding independent contractor staff being not being paid. While I had made several attempts to provide additional context to that situation, the school board was only concerned with the narrative provided by the superintendent. The fact is, that was a broken process that had been identified long before I was a volunteer or school employee, and that I should have never been in that situation. A few months later, I attended a color guard parent meeting because my daughter was in the program. I was there as a parent. During that meeting, Mr. Severs told a roomful of parents that I could work as an independent contractor for the program, as he had no control over how the director chose to spend the funds from the budget. However, when it came time for me to be paid several months later, Mr. Severs refused to allow that payment to be made. That meeting on September 26, 2023, was the last time I've spoken with Mr. Severs. Any subsequent emails or requests for a meeting have been ignored. In April 2024, the same vocal parents who were speaking up to support me in '23 and advocating for this program realized that I was hurting them by being around. The last few conversations I had with those parents included statements like, "Mr. Severs could take away our gym time. He hasn't left you alone, and it's only getting worse. You shouldn't be present during the community show because it will make him mad. You made me the scapegoat and treated me terribly. The one and only person that took the time to research what was going on, gathered all of the documentation, and asked questions to understand the situation, talked to other people to get multiple viewpoints, not just mine, essentially doing what she was elected to do. And at the conclusion of her research, she apologized for how I've been treated. The rest of you did nothing." However, while those events are a large part of why I'm here today, that isn't my focus. I'm here today because your negative relationship with me caused this district to fail my children. My children and my family have experienced bullying from parents and employees in this district. You have done nothing. When I felt like it was escalating this past fall and begun to hurt my children, my attorney requested a meeting with Mr. Severs in hopes that we could mediate these concerns and issues. Mr. Severs refused. It became so severe that my high school-aged children didn't feel safe continuing in the band and guard program. By second semester of this past school year, both had reached a point where they no longer felt safe attending school in this district. As of next year, all four of my school-aged children will not attend school here. They came to this decision on their own because they did not feel safe. You have shown my children that bullying is accepted as long as you are on the right side of the politics. As I've begun to share my story, I am learning that what has happened to my family and I is not unique. While the situations may be different, more and more people are sharing their negative experiences. This is not okay. According to Merriam-Webster, bullying is described as an abuse and mistreatment of someone vulnerable by someone stronger and more powerful. I believe, Mr. Severs, that you are a bully. I'm here today because I cannot let you do to another human being what you have done to me and my family. I apologize.
Make your comments directly. To me, please. No personal attacks.
I apologize, Mr. McCutcheon.
You may continue.
As for the school board, the fact that my children and other children are being harassed and bullied in this district, and you are letting it happen. If you don't want to manage the administration and do what you're allowed to do...
Ms. Langdon, your five minutes is up.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Our next speaker is Mr. William Langdon. Mr. Langdon, you have five additional minutes as well, sir.
William Langdon, it's 1062 Miller Road as well. Man, you know, I couldn't do this. I was dying sitting over there. Then I got to listen to my wife talk, and I'm able to stand up here and do this now. I have all these notes, and none of them really matter, because I don't know if you actually heard what she said. I know some of you. I've worked with some of you. Some of you I don't know, and if I don't know you, I'm not talking to you. Man, but I'm talking to you other guys as a man. You guys know, as men, what you carry on your shoulders. You know how hard life can be and the extra things you do for your family and stuff like that. But you guys and you, sir, and the school, man, you guys just crumbled that poor lady over there. And my kids, and every time I pick those pieces up and put them on my shoulders, you guys would just swoop in and cut them off again. It's just simply not even listening to what we had to say. The narrative, the story is what that person there made, and that was the answer. Nobody wanted. Some of you have talked to my boss and called me names. Others of you have told him that you just won't talk to us anymore. You have teachers who took us off of emails, so we missed things that our senior in high school did. We weren't aware of a end-of-year awards banquet, and I know he could have easily told us. He's a teenager. I think we all understand, they don't share. Okay? We missed that because we didn't know about it, because the teacher simply took us off the group email. How can I sit in here? How can anybody sit here and think that's okay? And how can you guys, as men, look at me and be like, I'm going to cut that guy's legs out again and again and again? We have at great financial cost and gigantic burden tucking our kids out of this school district to somewhere else, which is just another chop-down. It just stuns me that every narrative that we've ever had to be a part of is one-sided. Some of you guys know that I had an incident at the high school, and I didn't start it. There's videos there. I had an adult approach my 14-year-old son. I don't know what you expect to happen, but yet we were punished for it. They were initially, but then they were allowed to go back to doing everything they wanted to do, and we weren't. I didn't, I don't know, again, I'm sure most of your parents, I can't imagine what you would, I can't imagine you'd be like, you know, I wouldn't have done that. It blows my mind to sit here and think about all these things. And even when we're not here at the school, when we're at different events, we still have your employees, your parents, making up stories, doing whatever they can to do to make our lives difficult. Your students doing the exact same thing, knowing where they should and shouldn't be, and yet here we are. It just keeps circling back and forth. I'm freaking six inches short here because of the number of times you guys have chopped my legs out. It stuns me that you can let things get this far. I got nothing else. I appreciate the time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Langdon. Moving on to item C, board committee reports. Ms. Dalton, you are up first.
Okay. All right. This is the student achievement report. I normally have a PowerPoint, but being that it's summer, I didn't really have as much content, but I just wanted to kind of give an update, what's going on this summer as the teachers prepare for next year. At Donovan, they have a program that I think I've mentioned before, but I really wanted to highlight. It's kind of passing the torch, and what it is is the student and teacher relationships. The teachers are speaking to the next grade level to share with them the learning styles of the students and so that they can hit the ground running in the new year, in the new school year. So I think that is really good that there's a continuation there. And then in August, there's professional development going on with a focus on behavioral leadership, strategies, teaming, relationship building, and preventative movement. I'm not exactly sure what that is, but I think it's just kind of like getting students focused and directing the energy in the right direction for positive learning. So, and then at Bowman, the kindergarten and first graders will launch a meeting in August, the teachers, with a focus on literacy. So that's been a big thing for the past couple of years as we work to increase our literacy numbers, and that's taking place. And then the high school, the Hope Squad, was awarded a grant from the Burroughs Foundation, and a student on the Hope Squad, along with the parent connection with the Burroughs Foundation, shared the work that we're doing here at Lebanon with that organization. And I think that it's a really a big group of kids, and it's a peer-to-peer relationship building and helping those that need a little extra help in a peer-to-peer situation. So that's what's going on this summer. And again, I just wanted to congratulate the softball team in Wayne State. I just, you think about it, it's such a huge feat that they did. I mean, they were up against schools that are probably three times, four times our size, and for those girls to put together a team that can compete at that level is just incredible. So congratulations to them.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Dalton. CAT Committee, Mr. Gliotti.
We do not have an update, but our next scheduled meeting is August.
Thank you. Ms. Cope, legislative update?
Probably the biggest thing that I have to report on this month for the legislative update is the Ohio House introducing House Bill 335. This is going, this is proposing a sweeping property tax reform bill. This would remove the ability to levy millage and other things that is how many, how our public schools are funded currently, not solely, but that is one of the funding mechanisms. I would encourage everyone to educate yourself on that bill and on the legislation as it's going through. I think there's still room to make comment. I know Mr. Severs has been active in just contacting our legislators and making it known how that would affect Lebanon in particular. So just encourage you to educate yourselves on that. There's lots of information online that you can read about the bill.
Karen, do you have any comments on what the impact of 335 would be to us?
So we've had a couple of estimates. It could be upwards of 1.7 million in a year. So depends on what pieces actually get approved to what would happen, but that would be the upward look. So we could potentially lose 1.7.
So a couple of things just about it to make everybody aware, and I would really encourage our public to do a little bit of research and reach out to legislators. This bill, there have been over 45 bills introduced in Columbus since this new legislative, since this new group of legislators got to Columbus, seeking to change property taxes and to address the property tax crisis in Ohio, over 45 bills. House Bill 335 puts a lot of them into the same bill. It would remove inside millage altogether. Inside millage is something that's laid out in the Ohio Constitution. It is unvoted mills that goes to pay for public things. So sheriff, city, county, school districts, libraries, they all get a piece of this 10 mills, and it's 10 mills that's unvoted upon. It's not what we've asked for. It's based off of how the county splits things up. And so removing inside millage would not only impact us extremely negatively as a school district, it would also, I mean, Matt Nolan said to us, and, you know, said to the county superintendents, it would be the single largest defund the police bill, piece of legislation, ever passed in Ohio, because it would severely hamper tax dollars that go towards city of Lebanon and Warren County Sheriff and all police across the state, because that's one of the ways they're funded as well. It also rolls back the ability for school districts to put emergency levies and substitute levies on the ballot. If you guys know, we did a substitute several years ago by combining multiple emergencies. It doesn't have an immediate impact on us, but when that levy would come up for expiration in seven or eight years, means we would not be allowed to ask for that type of levy again. Means we would have to shift to a different type of levy. And so that would be something that is, that impacts us as well. And they're really not happy about that one because it's fixed sum, so it's a fixed dollar amount, not a fixed millage, not a millage amount. And so for some reason, that's one of the ones that they're working to deal with. So 335 would be potentially really devastating to not only us, but a lot of schools and other public entities in Ohio. Police, fire, cities, counties, like I said, public libraries, things like that. The other thing to be aware of, and it's all because what's circling is, the House did not vote to concur on the Senate budget. That went back to the Senate within the last two days, a couple of days. And so they've announced now the conference committee between the House... the House and the Senate. There'll be six people that get together to decide what in the budget is then brought forth to both chambers to be voted on. And so it's a really, really important time to make sure that we are advocating to our legislators, to making sure that we understand what's going on. The Senate version of the budget was much better to Lebanon City Schools in terms of the funding formula and things like that. They weren't going to make significant changes to the state funding formula that would impact us. The House version and the governor's version of the budget, we would be losing state funding in those two scenarios. Accurate? So what's happening right now is they're going to figure out which one of these, I think, are, my advocacy, and I've copied the board on this a lot, my advocacy is, I believe, as a human, as a person who pays taxes, all this, we have to do something to address property taxes. I get that, right? I'm not arguing about that. We need to do so sensibly. I've asked our legislators, this is a significant change in how the state of Ohio funds anything, right? There's a movement in Columbus to get rid of property tax altogether, not allow it to happen, which would be devastating, because then roads, all the things, right? How are we going to fund the things if that becomes an option that's off the table? Income, sales, all of those things would have to go up. So I just would really advocate for people reaching out to their legislators. We need to make sure if we're going to do property tax reform, which is what 335 is about, if we're going to do property tax reform, then we need to set that aside from the budget. And we need to do that through a thoughtful process, because you can't remove that amount of money from the state of Ohio and not have some way to replenish it or a portion of it in place. So I also believe that our advocacy groups and Bricker Green Law Firm, which is one of the law firms we work with, they have sent legal review. House Bill 335 is unconstitutional in Ohio as it is written, and so we need to keep pushing on whatever we pass in legislation can't violate Ohio Constitution. And so those are some things, I think, to add to what Mrs. Cope said about the process right now in Columbus. Nothing's going to happen in Columbus until the budget bill is done in the next couple of weeks, and the budget has to be approved and sent to the governor before the end of the month here in June. So this is the window to really advocate. Steve Wilson, Adam Matthews, Michelle Teska, if you live in the northern part of our school district, up towards Springboro and Franklin, you know, their state representative is Mrs. Tesca. So I think those are people, find their email accounts online, contact them, make sure they know, as residents and citizens, we have to make sure that we are doing so sensibly when we make these reforms, so.
Thank you, Mr. Severs. D, Warren County Career Center, Mr. Lane?
Yep. At the last meeting, we got a nice debrief of the trip, the European trip that several members, several members of the Career Center, I think we had two people that joined, right?
Yeah, we had two staff members from Lebanon High School that work in career experience, and those two staff members paid their way to go to the trip on their own, but they went as a part of the delegate from the Career Center.
So what we found was a lot of what's happening at the Career Center is being done very well. One of the biggest differences in Europe, and I think they were in Germany specifically, is this is a part of education, and they started much younger. There were some kids in fourth and fifth grade. Think about the bring-your-kid-to-work day, but it was much more involved than just a day of acting like you're helping your mom by taking the recycling or your dad and whatever they do at work. It's just, it was much more than that. It was exposing them to what those parents are creating at work, and it was really interesting to hear all the differences. The other thing I would like to bring up is that at the Career Center, lots of retirements, retirements that we're seeing as well, as the STRS lowered the retirement age. Career Center had a lot of staff had been around for a while, so they have quite a few openings there, but getting those filled as we go along. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lane. Moving on to Section Six, I need a motion to approve the minutes from our regular board meeting dated May 19th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none. Ms. Irvin?
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mrs. Cope?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Mr. Gliotti?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Number seven, Financial Consent Items. I need a motion to approve Items A through O.
So moved.
Second. Mrs. Irvin, you have the floor.
It should be a fairly short update. We are 11 months in, so we're almost, can't believe it, we're almost to the end of the school year. So do you have the most recent?
I have what you sent me yesterday.
Can I send you a different one? So this was the presentation from last month, which is the same, some of this is the same information, but just want to give you the updated version here.
I'm sorry if I missed something. I was out of the office for a portion of the day.
Probably I sent you the wrong one. There you go. Okay, so we talked about the new forecast. So in May, we updated the forecast with the new numbers. Now, of course, we just spent some time talking about in two weeks, the forecast may be null and void, right? So recognizing that everything that is occurring in the May forecast is a snapshot in time. We do not know what the impact of the changes in the state will hold, so anything could change with the state funding formula, and anything can change with the property tax. We are still awaiting changes on the federal grant side as well. They're still doing some movement there. We think we're going to be okay, but we don't know. From day to day, everything seems to shift. So just keeping us in place, this is the forecast we're working with, but understand that could change at any given time. So again, the green square is where we are projected to land at the end of this year, and as you can see, that yellow bar is pretty static to what we did last year, so very similar cash balance-wise, and looking into next year as well, ending at the five-year period with about $15 million. And I left the next slide in. Usually I take this one out, but just keeping you in the loop, just a reminder, because this is so new information, we do anticipate ending this year spending more than we've received. We anticipate next year getting slightly more. Now again, if anything changes with property tax or state funding, that could very easily change. We're talking very small dollars when we're in the midst of this size of a budget. Looking right now at new money needed in 2028, and again, depending on how the property tax reform goes, that might literally have to be one form of a levy, new money levy, right? So this is something we would need to add on, and we'll see how that plays out in the next couple of weeks. Okay, so 11 months in, we are currently right on target. Blue line is what we had last year, red line what we estimate, and then the gray is where we're at right now. So we anticipate ending the year around that 120-day mark, which is our target. This allows us some operating cash into the next year, just gives us a little bit of a comfort level if something drastic, dramatic happens on a revenue side. It gives us operating cash to get people back in here and be able to fund those if we have to take a huge loss, which we hope we don't on the revenue side. But currently sitting at 127 days, hoping to end the year right on target.
Can I mention something here? The target is 120 days. You know, that's going to be like four months of cash on hand. The reason I mention that is one of the state budget proposals and the House side would not allow school districts, and only school districts, but not allow school districts to carry any more than three months of operating, of three months of money in your carryover balance. And so they looked around the state. They thought people had too much money in carryover balance, and so what they would do in that scenario is to look at it and say, "You have too much money." The auditor, the Tax Budget Commission in Warren County would have to work together to reduce the levy collection to get that carryover balance less than three months of carryover balance. That's the House version. The Senate version is six months. Senate version went the, no, it was percentage, I'm sorry, 30%, right? 30%, not three months, 30%. The Senate version is 50% of your annual budget, but they allowed you to say, "Okay, we have more than 50% of our annual budget in carryover," which we don't, "but we are saving that for a project where we need to put a new roof on the building, or we need to add a wing, or we need to do something, so we're saving for a purpose." So one of the things is, our advocacy in that area has been, we have not had to ask for new money in six years in our school district. 2019, I believe, was the last new money levy, and having a carryover balance of several months in that area has allowed us to deal with the low times and the high times, and so we've been very fiscally responsible. We've been very efficient with the resources. So we would be close to 30% if the House version of the bill goes through at 30%. If the Senate version of the bill goes through at 50%, cap one, carryover balance, we're not, we're not close to that. So something to keep in mind, I think we were like 31 or 32%, something like that in terms of carryover balance compared to the annual general fund budget.
I think it's important to note that this is as of June. They would be looking at these numbers as of June, when we've gotten all year's worth of property tax. If you remember back to January, February, when I was saying, "Yeah, that cash balance is dipping real low," they, they're not looking at that. And so from a treasurer's perspective, I get a little antsy in, "Well, how are we going to fund those months until we get..."
How did the bill go in January?
Right? So it's not just a June issue, and I think that's something that, again, we ask, if there's reform, great, but make sure you're looking at all the pieces, not just, "Okay, as of June, you have too much cash." Well, what does it actually mean? Okay, so from a revenue and expense side, we're almost done with the year, so we're looking at a target of about 92%. Revenues, we're at 98%. That's, as I always say, because we've collected the property tax that we're going to collect, and that's our primary source of revenue. We do have a month left of the state funding formula, so that will be the other 2% there, the majority of it. And then on the expenses side, we are actually at 92%. So right on target. Usually we see that one or two percentage points below the target, so that was interesting this month, but it is trending right, very closely with our forecast. So curious to see how this coming month pans out. School's over, right? We're not buying as much. We are paying those bills that are catching up, so curious to see how that will land, but still very close to what we've forecasted. Any questions?
And I will go ahead and read the rest of them, and Ms. Irvin or Mr. Severs, if you want to stop me at any time to jump in, but B is our 2025 General Fund Monthly Report. C is our June Appropriations Resolution. D is an amended certificate of estimated resources, and all this is in our packets. E is a Student Activity and Purpose and Budget Statement, one from Mr. Back for the FBLA and Mr. Franz and his building fund.
And those are both for next school year.
Next school year, yeah. Because we did a bunch of them last month for next year.
Yes.
Okay. F is a sizable list of donations, and we thank everyone for your donations. They are much appreciated.
Mr. McCutcheon, I want to jump in real quick. We started this program with lunch fees last year, and I just wanted to give a shout out to these parents. There were some very large donations where a parent has put money on their student's lunch account. That student didn't use it all, and they've given it to the use of students who cannot afford those lunches. So I think that's a really cool program. We're getting a really good response back from those parents. So I just wanted to mention that that is a really cool thing that our parents are doing for our kids.
Thank you. And also to Bowman Primary PTO, the $30,000. I believe that's the, is that the handicapped accessible equipment? Yeah. I don't know if you saw the video of me with the bouncy ball thing at Berry, where I was racing the kid, the hippity-hop. So the kid challenged me. I took him on. He was beating me. I cheated. I won. But when I made a comment to him, you know, "Don't go back to your parents and say how you whipped on a 59-year-old man," his mom was standing right there, which was wonderful for me. But she was involved in that and explained, you know, that whole process, which was great. So I'm, any of you that want to meet me at Berry next year for the hippity-hop race, I would appreciate all the support I could get. Item G is approved Lebanon City School Breakfast and Lunch Costs for 2025, 2026. H is approved the Board Resolution and Payments for Payment in Lieu of Transportation. I is the Facility Use Rental Personal Cost Transportation for Field Trips. J is to approve the agreement between Hamilton County Educational Service Center and Lebanon City Schools. K, there was a couple then and nows. L is Fund 035 Termination and Severance Fund. I think we discussed this, didn't we, a couple of months ago, creating this?
Yeah, so let me explain that one just a little bit. I proposed this to the CAP Committee as something, we have a group of teachers that are around the same age. We're starting to see those retirements, just like Mr. Lane mentioned at the Career Center. We're starting to see those, and so as a mechanism to prepare, we're creating, we're asking the board to create a brand-new fund that we will put money from our general fund into this fund so that it levels out those very large spikes in retirements. So the forecast software takes a five-year average, three-year average, I'm not sure which one it is, of those retirements, and that's what we project. This year alone, that the difference between those two is $2,000 to $300,000. That's substantial if we're not planning for it, and we don't really have a great way to plan for it, because we don't know which teachers have been serving in other districts. So we don't really know until they notify us. So this is a way for us to put together, every year, let's move money from the general fund over to this fund. Not a lot. We don't want to get a lot of money here, but just enough that it doesn't hurt our general fund on these random years where we have a lot of retirements, if that makes sense.
M is a advance, and N transfers from one building fund to the Renaissance Academic Success Fund, and O is to approve the amended appropriations for fiscal year 2026.
And real quick, let me talk through the advances and transfers. So if you remember, last year, we changed the advance, the way we do advances a little bit. We were doing it every single month. The auditors came in and said, "Don't do that. Do it once at the end of the year as needed." So I put in here something in June, because it's for the current fiscal year. That gives me some authority to whatever we need to transfer. You guys are okay with that, as long as I bring it back to you at the July meeting, as the, here's the dollar amount. So I put that in for June. The transfers are kind of a preemptive look at what we're going to need moving forward. So specifically, the Junior High Renaissance Academic Success Fund has been negative for the past few years. So what I've proposed here to do is take the building fund, which does, they raise money for various programs that support the kids, that aren't general fund-worthy, right? So extras. So I propose that that fund would take on this role. They, the Renaissance Academic Success Fund does bring in some revenue, so that revenue would go into the building fund, but the excess costs could then be covered by that building fund, instead of leaving a fund negative and having to worry about the advance. And then the athletic fund, I will need some direction on the advance for July. And then the athletic fund, I will need some direction on the, um, advance for July, but this specifically is to support the, the cost of the softball team going to the state. Currently, their high school and junior high funds are sitting with a deficit cash balance. They will be one of the advances unless the board would prefer that to be a transfer amount. So we're gonna have further discussion about future, how do we deal with this? We haven't had time to make those analyses yet. So I need to know from a July standpoint, do you want me to bring it back as an advance? Do you want me to bring it back as a transfer?
All right. So we'll just, we can discuss that with you individually then, Karen?
Perfect, perfect.
Is that, is that correct, Mr. Severs?
Okay. As long as it's voted on in public at the next board meeting, you guys can ask what those differences and how it'll be handled, but, um, you know, are you, are you asking to advance money from next year's budget or are you asking to just transfer money out of the general fund?
And they are, that movement is still going on, right? So they're still bringing in revenues, approved some today. So I don't have a final number yet.
And I think it's important, I, I shared with, with, um, the board, I think, in an email, but, um, the cost of officials has gone up dramatically, uh, in the last year. The athletic department fund is, um, solely funded for the most part, what we're talking about with this fund, with ticket sales and fundraising. Um, and so, uh, as less people go to sporting events or pay to go to sporting events, that revenue is going to decrease while the expenses still keep going up. So, um, I, I think that's, uh, it's a discussion that Karen needs to have with the board and the board needs to approve that, but, um, wh- which way you want to go with it?
Well, part of that, too, is in the past, the schools got a portion of postseason ticket sales from the state, and that's not gone away.
That is a way, correct. So we hosted, for example, two state playoff football games this year and made zero dollars as a school district for that. Um, they reimbursed us for the officials' cost and the game workers and, you know, besides athletic boosters selling concessions, we weren't getting any money to host that event. Where in the past, we would get a portion of the ticket prices with OHSAA. So, um, certain things like that, you know, have been, uh, problematic, but, um, I, I think there's, we, we need to find some way to, um, to make sure that that is not an ongoing problem. And, and I don't, I don't think necessarily that it's poor management or, or accounting on behalf of our athletic department. I think it's just we're seeing fewer people come to sporting events and we're seeing costs go up. And if that's how we're gonna fund the account, then it's gonna be hard for us to continue to have that, so.
All right. Any other comments or questions on A through O, section seven? Hearing now, Mrs. Irvin, roll call, please.
Mrs. Coke?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Mr. Gliotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Section eight, public records request. The board acknowledges the receipt of the public records request as presented by the treasurer. Number nine, policies. I need a motion to approve in section nine, item A. We're gonna handle these one at a time. And A is approve the first reading of the policies, one, two, three, and four. I need a motion.
So moved. Second.
I would like to just make a few things. So the graduation requirements, there are no structural changes happening to the policy that, based on how we're doing graduation requirements right now. Um, if the board would remember, we talked about this about a year ago, um, during COVID, the Board of Education at that time reduced the number of credits required to graduate from twenty-three to twenty. Um, that resolution passed at the time, uh, is still the resolution that's on the books for the school district, and so twenty is the requirement. The board policy, however, was never changed, uh, to reflect twenty-three, it still said twenty-three instead of twenty. Um, so we talked about it previously, and we said we need to discuss this going forward. Um, I think at the time, the resolution in two thousand and twenty, uh, Mr. Lane at the time said that he would be okay agreeing to that and voting yes if there was an annual review of that decision. Um, and I think we've, this is about, we talked about it about a year ago when this came up. Um, I shared with the board the other day information from Mr. Grayler and Mr. Reynolds on how many kids are falling between twenty and twenty-three. Twenty is not, uh, abnormally low compared to some of those around us. I sent you what others around us had, anywhere from twenty to twenty-three. Um, three with twenty, one or two with twenty-one, some with twenty-two, um, one with twenty-three. So, uh, it's my, it's my recommendation that we keep what's been in place. I think that it is, um, it was just twenty. That's what this policy change is about. I am fine if the board would like to go back to twenty-three or something in the middle, but that's a board decision because right now the board policy doesn't match the board resolution in twenty twenty. And so based off the advice of our attorney, based off the advice of our policy folks, um, the most recent thing is twenty credits for graduation. So that's why that's there. Um, if the board would like to leave it how it stands currently and, and go back to it at a later date, then, then we can do that. Uh, you can, um, we can, we can have that discussion. I'm up to, I'll listen. Uh, the next three policies are new, as it says there on the agenda. Our LEA contract with our teachers, uh, union has a provision, uh, that would allow us to, um, employ retired teachers. We do not have that same provision in our OPEC or LCSEA or classified, um, uh, contracts. And we don't have anything currently for exempt employees, administrators and exempt hourly employees. What we're trying to do here is if this were to be an option, um, what would be the policies that we would use to decide how we would, would deal with that? Um, if the board is, um, fine with moving forward with this, then we would look at, is what's with LEA currently good or do we need an MOU? Same thing with OPEC and with LCSEA, just so we can clarify what provisions of their negotiated agreement we need to follow and what would apply here. So these are three new policies. This is allowable under Ohio law. This is about getting, I think for us, the ability to say, here's how it would be handled at Lebanon City Schools if somebody were to request this. Um, and, uh, so for anybody, I'm, anybody have any questions on any of those four policies tonight or comments? Or do you need any more information from me prior to making a final decision next month?
Questions? Good. Ms. Irvin, roll, please.
Mr. Gliotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mrs. Coke?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, again, in section nine, under policies, I'm gonna need a motion to approve item B.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so this one's gonna require some explanation. What we're asking the board to do with this motion is to suspend policy oh-one-three-one, which is titled legislative. Uh, the suspension would be for this month and this month only, and it's for a very specific purpose. So under that policy, the Board of Education, um, is required to consider board policy two times. So we have a first reading one month and a second reading the next month. The purpose for that is to allow adequate time for somebody to make a decision about those policies before voting ultimately to put them into effect. Ohio law does not require two readings. Ohio law only requires that the board approves the policy. The policy of Lebanon City Schools is for two readings. The reason I'm asking the board to consider suspending that policy for this evening, and it will automatically, according to the same, according to board policy and the bylaws, would automatically revert back next month unless you vote to do away with the policy, suspend the policy again or whatever. But it automatically triggers and comes back in according to board policy. And there's a very specific reason. In the next section, there is a policy I'm asking you to approve that is a new policy, and it's required to be passed prior to July one of twenty twenty-five. So state law is in effect, it's required to be passed this month. So we did not bring it to the board previously because we were advised that it was possible that that policy and law was being challenged and would change. And so we, it is still being challenged, but it's not gonna be changed between now and July one, so we must have a policy in effect by July one. Parents' Bill of Rights, which I'll talk to you in a moment about, but the reason that we need to do this this way is to make sure that we meet the legal requirement to have the policy passed prior to July one. Does anybody have any questions about that? So what we're asking you to do is suspend the policy that requires two readings. State law only requires one. Okay?
That makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you for the explanation.
And it looks like, I know we're gonna get to it later, but that policy wasn't even updated until the end of May. We haven't had a...
Correct. So...
We couldn't have had it twice unless we do a special meeting.
Unless we do a special meeting.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay.
So B is just about suspension of policy oh-one-three-one, not about the other things.
Right. All right, okay. Mrs. Irvin?
So what happens if you don't hit the deadline by July first?
The board president goes to jail.
Um, I, I don't know the answer to that. The law is in effect.
Yeah.
Whether we agree with it or whether we approved it or not, the law is in effect. Um, I don't believe that the board or this board has, would have any problems with the Parent Bill of Rights bill, um, as it's presented. Um, it's about giving parents access to information of what, uh, their services are for kids at school and making sure that confidential information is shared only with the parents, but that it is shared with the parents. So the law still goes into effect whether we pass the policy or not. My guess is we get some sort of letter from the state of Ohio that says we didn't pass the policy in time.
Did they withhold funds or anything like that?
There's no threat of that that I'm aware of.
Yeah, I'm just wondering.
I think they're just withholding funds anyway on their end. So I'm hearing.
I, I mean, I've never had it happen before. I would like to not be the person that gets my name on that list, but I want to be in compliance.
We'd rather be compliant.
We want to follow state law.
So...
Okay. Is that the same thing with the, um, other two?
So the other two policies are current practice, but the reason that I'm asking for those to be considered here is because then the handbooks that are going out could be accurate for parents to sign off on them. If we wait until July, then we have to modify the handbooks. Um, we would put out a handbook for parents to sign off on and then tell them, um, sorry, you now have to sign off on the use of medication and this animal proper, prop, policy separately. I think it would be better for us to get it one time in front of our parents. So I, I'll talk about those in a second as well.
Okay, all right. So we are still on section nine, policies, item B.
Yes.
And we are ready for a vote.
Mrs. Coke?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Gliotti?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, still in policies, section nine, I need a motion to approve the following three policies, please.
So moved.
Second.
And Mr. Severs, you have the floor again.
Okay, so Parents' Bill of Rights, um, was a new law passed, uh, by this current legislation that, um, essentially means that we must consult with parents and need to inform them. They have the right to see all curriculum, um, prior, you know, if they request it, which has always been the state law, but they, that was specified here. Um, they have the right to, um, review, and it limits our ability to, uh, present sexual content to students in grades K through three, which we are not doing anyway, uh, but it makes it illegal to do that. It doesn't necessarily describe what sexual content is, but we're not allowed to do it in grades K through three. Um, the law would allow for sexual content discussions to be had in grades four through twelve, but only if we tell parents ahead of time and we give them the chance to review the materials. That's what the law states. Um, again, we're not covering sexual content materials in those grades anyway. This does not apply to health class where we're required to talk about, um, sexually transmitted diseases and things like that. Does not apply to, uh, educational programming where we talk about reproductive organs or anything like that in a science or biology class. It is really explicit sexual content is what they're trying to get at there. Um, it also requires notification to parents, um, if individuals, um, discuss with a school employee that they would like to be called, um, if they would like to be called different pronouns than their birth, um, sex, or if, uh, they would like to be noted, called by a different name other than, uh, the, their gender, uh, at, their sex at birth. Um, so the parents have the right to know those things according to this law, so this policy complies with that. Um, again, it's required to be passed prior to July one. The revised use of medications, there were some legal changes where we must now have a policy for over-the-counter medication, but previously the policy called over-the-counter medication non-prescribed medication. So non-prescribed is over-the-counter, but we were required to change the policy. Um, we did make some, some changes in there to, um, some things, but basically nothing structurally, uh, we're not providing over-the-counter medication to anything, uh, below the high school to students unless it's with a prescription from their, from the, um, the, the doctor. Um, and then the last one is animals on district property, and the things that we changed in the animals on district property is it discusses facility dog. Nothing else changes in terms of that, but facility dog is, uh, what we now have at Lebanon High School, which is, um, smoke, uh, that was assigned to, uh, a counselor. It was purchased by the district by use of a grant. Um, it's the district's property, but it has several trained handlers, one of which it goes home with at the evening, in the evening. So this policy is outlining how that works. It's the, if we have a facility dog purchased with district property, it's the possession of the property. If it's purchased by the handler, it still needs to go through the same steps, um, to be approved. The reason I'm asking for, uh, these things to be considered on a single vote instead of a double vote is, again, that gives us the chance to have that information because those things are already in effect and would go into a handbook, um, for approval in July, but, or sign off by parents. So any questions about those three policies? In twelve years as a superintendent, I've never asked the board policy to suspend, um, a board policy to do such a thing. I didn't know that that was the option that I had. Um, so when asked how to get these things passed in one month, this was the advice of the attorney, it is not gonna be my practice that we do this, uh, maybe ever again, but it's not gonna be the regular thing that we do. So...
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Irvin, roll, please.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Mrs. Coke?
Yes.
Mr. Gliotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Section, section ten, other educational, and these are consent items. I need a motion to approve consent, educational consent items A, B, and C, please.
So moved.
Second.
A is approve the twenty twenty-five Lebanon High School graduates, and I thought they did a great job at graduation. They was a sharp...
They did. I think that was the largest class ever. Um, could have been. I don't know. It was pretty big.
It was a sharp group of kids.
Yep. Uh, this is, remember, under, we do this every year. We approve the list of graduates because we're certifying that they've met all the requirements, but we've already certified them and they've already taken their diplomas. So this is pretty perfunctory at this point in time, but, um, it's the thing we do.
B, approve high school diploma for Jasmine Kathleen Mink. And C is approve sixteen handbooks for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. Comments, questions, concerns? Ms. Irvin, roll, please.
Mr. Gliotti?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mrs. Coke?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I'm gonna need a motion to approve the personnel consent items A through O in section eleven, please.
So moved.
Second.
And I will go ahead and read through these, um, not the names, just each item. A is one retirement. B is a few resignations. C is employment, pending acceptable BCI FBI background check. D is... D is substitute employment. E is a list of supplementals. And I, I wanted to point out Michaela Spidel, that's a pretty good, pretty good kid there, so I'm, I'm happy to see that she's coaching tennis. F, a supplemental volunteer coach. G is our board resolution for the employment of non-licensed coaches. H is a list of change of status. And there's quite a bit of those.
So, uh, just as a reminder on change of status, when we hire somebody in, um, we hire them in typically at, you know, you see step zero, bachelors, BA step zero. Once we get their transcripts and then we move them, um, to where they are based off of the years of experience they have or things like that. The second page there, you'll notice that, um, there's a large group of people in exempt status there that are the hourly exempt employees. Um, we, we negotiated with OPEC and LCSEA, um, within the last year, and both of those associations, which are hourly employees, um, as well. We did some across the board adjustments. So some of those classifications got like a 50 cent bump plus the 3% or a dollar bump plus 3% as we looked at what the market was, um, for other school districts in the area, um, the positions that are harder for us to fill and find. What we're asking here is these, these personnel, they had received the 3%, but the gap and was really close because others had received the 50 cents or the, the dollar bump. And so instead of doing that on a salary schedule that's mixed with administrators and, and hourly employees, uh, we're moving them an additional step, which is, um, a little bit less than, than what was given, uh, with the dollar across the board, but also pretty close and in step with that. So we felt Karen and I and Brian that it was the way for us to keep some equity between those positions, um, as their counterparts who were not exempt employees and had a bargaining unit negotiating on their behalf. You know, for example, a central office administrative assistant and a building administrative assistant, uh, the, the increases from one year to the next were, were, were off and askew. So that's what we, uh, were proposing there and would like the board to approve for that. That only applies to the hourly exempt employees. It does not apply to administrators.
Moving on, I is a list of volunteers pending their BCI/FBI checks. A little shaky on the third one, but we'll see how that shakes out. J is, uh, some tutors. K substitutes. L is extended days.
So we need to extend a few days. We had a counseling, a scheduling situation at Lebanon Junior High, and we needed to approve up to two additional days there for the counselor. Something happened within the software and we were, that's what the, the extended days was. So we lost, um, next year's scheduling. It reverted backwards, so we had to kind of go back and find it again and make sure that it was updated. So Ms. Marsh was, um, taking care of that for us.
And then the second list is for next school year.
Correct, that's next school year.
Next school year.
One extended days, and those are either, um, what's in the contract or, um, you know, positions that we, uh, have them work some additional days preparing for school, so.
M is some leave of absence and unpaid days. And N is extracurricular aides.
Morgan.
And O is to approve the 2025-2026 revised exempt handbook.
The purpose of the revision on the exempt handbook would be to include language, um, around retire, rehire, um, and some other changes that went into effect based off of the negotiations with other bargaining units, so.
Any other comments or questions from section 11, items A through O? Hearing none, Ms. Irvin, roll call, please.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Cope?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Mr. Gliotti?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to section 12, board comments. Uh, Mr. Lane, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Not today.
Not today? Mrs. Dalton?
No, all good.
Mr. Gliotti?
All good also. Thank you.
Cope?
Nothing.
Nothing? I have a couple of things. One, I think they're still selling softball state championship shirts online, and I think it ends tonight. Is that correct? I think it ends tonight.
I think it does.
It's, it's over tonight, so we want to take care of that. Uh, and then Wednesday at 3, uh, we'll have a community event for the team at 3 o'clock. And is it going to be inside or outside?
It's in the auditorium.
It's going to be in the auditorium?
Yeah, and I think the reasoning and timing, we had some questions about the timing of that. A lot of these girls are playing, um, you know, evening activities with summer softball and those sort of things. And so, uh, trying to find a time that worked for the majority of the kids, if not all of them, to be there. And so I think that was what dictated the timing more so than, you know, anything else, so.
Uh, the other comment I have is, is I will apologize to anybody that, uh, has listened to this entire meeting, especially the earlier section of the, uh, community comments. I was at those meetings and I can reassure you, the things that were said by our two speakers were inaccurate and false. And, um, sometimes when people come to meetings, they will say things that are just completely untrue. So I was at every meeting that occurred and a lot of the events that occurred. So if anyone has any questions about what was said, please, please feel free to reach out to me and I will tell you the truth. With that, section 13, we need to enter into executive session to consider the appointment, employment, or compensation of a public employee or official. May I have a motion to enter into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I'm sorry. Ms. Irvin, roll, please.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Mr. Gliotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Cope?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Motion carried.
The board will enter into executive session at 7:17, it looks like. And no action will be taken during or after this session, but I would like to thank everyone for coming and watching from home, and we look forward to seeing you at our next meeting.